Okay, the zoning board of adjustment meeting for February 13th, 2006. The water roll call, please.
Aye, here.
Mr. Chautman?
Aye, here.
Your line?
Yeah.
Leo Philly.
Yeah. Okay.
I didn't hear Dana Glennon. Was Dana Glennon accounted for?
Yes. Are you here?
I'm here. I'm not asked.
All right, according to our agenda... Oh, my God, it works. The first item on business was a rehearing of the following case requested by Costas Enterprises, LLC, Davenport. The case was originally heard on November 14th, 2005. Rehearing was granted on November 21st, 2005, scheduled for December 12th, 2005, and continued to January 16th, 2006, per the applicant's request. The rehearing for the following case requested by Davenport Realty LLC and a but immediately adjacent to the property at 145 Main Street owned by Davenport was granted a rehearing on December 12th, scheduled for January 16th. Basically, we see the letter from Costas Enterprises, who was requesting the variances and special exception, and they have withdrawn all their requests. So, the entire case has been withdrawn, and there will be no further discussion on it unless it is refiled in a later date if they so wish. Do you want to have any questions? All right, the second item on the agenda is consideration of a request for a rehearing by Rivermore Landing Condominium Association regarding the following case, which was approved on November 14th, 2005. Is that GNPM or GNPM? I thought it was Great Northern Property Management.
Correct. GNPM.
It should be M.
Yes.
All right, GNPM appealed from an administrative decision referenced Section 403 of the New Market Zoning Ordinance. The applicant requests a hearing regarding a letter directing removal of a sign in violation of Section 403 for off-site commercial signs. The property is located at 125 Main Street, Unit B, Rivermore Landing, tax map U2 lot 368, in the M1 zone. So, this is not a public hearing, per se. It is a request by one of the abutters, requesting the zoning board to grant a rehearing of the decision arrived at by the zoning board on November 14th, 2005. Now, this is not a public hearing. There'll be no public import. There's no public notification. Your abutters were not notified. This is just a discussion amongst the board members as to whether the board, based on the appeal from Rivermore Landing Condominium, they presented a document stating their reasons why they felt a rehearing should be granted. Based on that, the zoning board has to make a decision based on their reasons why they feel that a rehearing should be granted them. So, it's not a public hearing. There'll be no public import. It will be just a discussion amongst the board based on the information given to the board by Rivermore Landing on why they feel the zoning board made a mistake when they granted the appeal of administrative decision. The decision was that a sign on the Rivermore condominium buildings, which had been there for...
1992.
1992, whether it was a grandfathered sign and whether it had to conform to the new zoning regulations as pertaining to signs. The decision made by the zoning board at the November 14th hearing was that it was a grandfathered sign and therefore did not come under the new zoning regulations. That is the appeal. That is the decision that the Rivermore Landing Condominium Association wants to have a rehearing on. The first rehearing, the zoning board felt that it was grandfathered and therefore the request by the zoning administrator to remove the sign was not valid. It was overruled.
That was actually for a... The nonconformity was actually the off-site advertising.
Okay.
Was propagated.
What, yeah, okay.
Which the board overturned.
Right.
If I could offer this for this evening's presentation, any considerations?
I have a letter in hand here from the zoning administrator to the Leo Philly and Zoning Board Adjustment Chairman from Dan Vincent's zoning administrator. "Consideration of request by Rivermore Landing Association regarding approval of GNPM. Information through investigation by my office, which is, which at this time is not public information, would be relevant to decisions to be made by this board and when released would assist the board in making decision in this case." And therefore, he is requesting a continuation of the case. We also have a letter from from Great Northern Property Management Realty Trust at the request of Attorney Roberts. I write... Nope, not the wrong one. January 30th, 2006. The zoning board received a letter from Sanford Roberts, the attorney for Great Northern Property Management Realty Trust, stating at the zoning board meeting of January 16th, "You will recall I mentioned that Mr. Gargiola would not be available in February for a meeting at which the board would consider whether to approve a request for a rehearing. We then said we'd work it out since we wanted the matter to move forward. Unfortunately, it now appears that he will not be available, so I'm requesting that the board reschedule his decision to a date in March. Having continued your decision on January 15th, 16th, at the request of the association, it would seem only fair to grant us the same courtesy since I assume the association will be submitting an additional material relevant to this decision. We need to be able to review it and respond at the hearing. Your attention to this request is appreciated. I have contacted Allison Bethel, who represents the association, and she does not oppose this request." Thank you, Sanford Roberts, attorney. We also have a letter from Allison Bethel, who is the attorney for Rivermore Landing. "At the request of Attorney Roberts, I write to confirm that the Rivermore Landing Condominium Association does not object to GNPM's Realty Trust January 30th request to postpone a board's decision on Rivermore's request for a rehearing to a date in March. Rivermore respectfully requests that this decision be rescheduled for the earliest possible date." Allison Bethel. Well, it's up to the board to decide whether they want to continue this. It's not...
I think with the hidden information that Dan Vincent's got, we've got to consider rehearing the case again.
I would agree.
How about the state ruling that anything that was... They could have brought up at the time that we made that decision to begin with should have been brought up then, not down the road by Rivermore Landing months later.
Right, that should be part of our discussion as to whether or not we grant the rehearing.
Yep.
I guess that's... This started in September.
Yep.
And here we are in February, and we're still going on it. Law basically states that...
All that information was available at the time. None of them ever brought it up at the meeting.
Maybe some more. Might be something to be overlooked.
But the time for them to bring it up and oppose was...
On rehearings for the board, the board must decide to grant or deny the rehearing within 30 days. We're on 60 days now and counting. So, I guess it's a...
Well, we had a change of membership in here, too, you know.
Mm-hmm.
That postponed that along. So, we've got to consider that.
Any discussion or a motion to consider if we have to consider...
Well, I'd like to know what harm would it do if we were to reschedule this and accommodate them? I mean, we have nothing to...
No.
We're trying to... Or anybody has anything to want to hire. We just want to be fair to all parties. If it means another hearing, I mean, what time? It's just our time to hear it.
Can you put your thumb right on it by the state? That information was available at the time of that hearing about the sign, and it was not brought forward until afterwards, afterwards, afterwards. And now, they're asking for another rehearing, which should have been done at the time of the initial hearing.
Well, I'm using two factors here. One, I'm new. Number two, the code enforcement officer has additional information. Yeah, I don't understand.
If we agree to rehear it, yeah.
Correct.
Then it'll be pertinent. Otherwise, it's not.
Just to answer some of that, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In review of the application for the rehearing that's being submitted on behalf of Rivermore Landing, reading through the documents, I think it indicates that some of the information they're basing their motion for rehearing on is actually information that was given by, in testimony during the review of the sign itself for nonconformity. So, I guess to reason would say that the... Those that are moving for a motion for rehearing were not aware of those facts that were brought about at that hearing so that they couldn't bring that information to the table with them. Now that they have that information, I think that's what they're basing their motion on.
The motion what?
For the request for the motion for rehearing.
Now, what about the request for continuance?
The request for the continuance is the board's decision. But I think in answer to Mr. Lang's question on why wasn't the information brought forward earlier, I think some of that information was from the testimony that was given.
Based on your memo here, when is this information going to be made public?
It... I would presume within seven days of today.
Today is the 13th.
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 21st.
So, we're coming back next week?
It's up to the board as to when they would want to hear the case.
Well...
If they decide to hear the case.
But he's out of town, and we have a lot of this asking for it to be in March so he can be here to defend whatever. So, it won't be until March anyhow. If we give them the same courtesy is what they ask.
Further information I found out today is that we have another request for variance, and it has to be heard. Well, basically, but the 27th is being scheduled for.
For...
This month.
Which one? Which case?
February 27th.
Which case?
We don't have it yet.
Oh, okay.
It's another case, and I guess the question is whether we could continue it to the 27th. Is whether this information...
That work with you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but they're asking for us to please schedule it for March.
They ask.
Doesn't mean we have to give it.
Right, I guess that's...
But they're not going to be around during the time.
He's got a lawyer.
Well, he originally said he would be around. Then we received a letter saying he's not going to be around. So, we sent him a letter and said, "This is the date at which we're scheduling. Can you accommodate that date?" Let them respond back to that.
It's... To me, it's unusual. I mean, to me, looking at what... How these attorneys are going back and forth, they think that they're going to re-argue this case at this meeting. They aren't even going to be allowed to talk at this meeting.
Why is that?
Because that's... This is not a public hearing. This is just a discussion amongst the board members as to whether or not we're going to grant the rehearing. If we grant the rehearing, then we go through the whole process of posting in the paper, notifying the abutters, and we start over from scratch again. The decision for a rehearing is a request by Rivermore Landing to grant a rehearing. We have to decide amongst us...
So, we have to decide tonight whether we're going to reschedule this to hear another hearing to approve that request for a hearing.
Right, it's not going to be granting the rehearing. It's going to be continuing the board's discussion as to whether or not it will grant a rehearing.
And if we're within RSAs and everything else, state regulations, what harm would it do for this board to rehear it?
To grant the continuance of the whether we will rehear it?
Yeah. Well, if we do rehear it, what harm would that be?
Well, that's two steps down the road. Let's take step one. The first step is to whether or not we're going to grant the rehearing.
Okay.
And the question is, do we want to postpone that discussion as to whether or not we want to grant the rehearing? My opinion in the past has always been that the applicant that grants the rehearing puts their reasons why they feel we have made a mistake or new evidences obtained that wasn't available at the original hearing, and therefore, it should be reheard.
And this, in this case, would be Rivermore.
Right, they are the ones. And personally, they are the ones who have to have the burden of proof, proof of convincing this board that we should grant the rehearing.
And is that information that the code enforcement officer may have to substantiate that request?
It certainly would.
Okay.
And that's not available till next Monday.
Right, so if we need a...
Request for this hearing, if we approve it, to be in March.
Then I would feel comfortable to go ahead and make a motion that we grant the request to reschedule...
Reschedule a meeting to discuss the rehearing.
To discuss the rehearing, exactly.
Okay. And I'll second that.
Okay, problem...
For the 27th.
For the 27th.
For the 27th.
If that's the date that will work with you and work with the parties involved. Or should we just say, if it works with you, works with the board, that's the date at which we want to hear it?
We've got to make a date specific right now.
Okay, date specific would be February 27th.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion...
Then we can pick a date in March to hear it.
If we decide to do that.
If we decide to grant the rehearing, we can then...
Yes, yes.
The... We still will only have four members on the 27th.
Yeah.
But we don't need five members to discuss the motion for rehearing. But the applicant who is coming on the 27th may make the decision that they want to wait until there's a five-member board. But that's... We can't wait because the request for variance came in... A brief call, I guess, and we're running out of days when we can hear it within the 30 days allowed. Any further discussion on a motion to continue the discussion on the rehearing of the appeal of administrative decision? All those in favor, signify. Aye, raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion for a rehearing will be continued until...
February 27th.
What's the round?
February 27th.
Got that, okay.
At 7:00.
Got that.
Is it all ice? I put this in the refrigerator for seven hours.
Oh, this is...
No, I am...
Tonight, I don't know who I'll be tomorrow night, but... Okay, Leo, what's next?
We're going home.
Are we? Are we?
Right now. He get paid. He's happy. He's leaving.
Well...
Show off time. Dad's on time and air.
Yeah, four hour minimum.
Yeah. Don't be so lucky.
You give me an idea, my service call log's going to be four hours.
Do you have many service calls?
Everything's man-made, subject to break down. Forget we not forget to check the oil on Saturday.
Oh, 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 cold.
How important are you when it gets cold?
Nice, nice for coming.
Yes, she was here on one of the other cases. What's her name?
Lisa Stewart. She owns the building to the right of the open lot where Costas wanted to build.
Oh, yeah.
The one that's leaning over.
Lean over.
Yeah, the other property.
The Hotel Hilton?
There is no setback to the roof. It's an overlap.
Okay. The third item on the agenda is... A request by Irving Oil Corporation/Dowan Ruggles Inc. variance reference Section 706B2 of New Market Zoning Ordinance. "The applicant requests a variance to permit the illumination of a red LED light strip on Irving's new canopy fascia. Property is located at 78 Exeter Street, tax map U4, lot 3, in the B1 zone." Do you have representatives from Irving?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you remember in the past, I was greatly opposed to Irving's shrouds.
I only remember that.
Remember that.
Yeah.
I think since the board has approved the use of the shrouds, and I think that if you look at Irving Gas Station right now, the appearance that they've made there is somewhat pleasing, I would say, away from the lighting aspect of it. The... I think the adaption of the red neon light around the perimeter of the shroud, even though what we're looking at in the ordinance here is saying that the laser light source light would be prohibited. But I think that now that they have gone so far as to install the shrouds, have redesigned their lighting package, they've painted the face of their building. If you can envision that shroud, it's the perimeter of the shroud that's there now above the canopy, the red, white, and blue horizontal lines in it. The... I think when we see the new pictures of that with the red neon light on it, I think it will prove itself to be, I don't want to say artistically acceptable, but probably more aesthetically acceptable than what is there for the red, white, and blue bands around the canopy at this time. I think with the red neon lighting, we're going to lose the white lights around the perimeter of the canopy. I think it will soften up the view of the Irving Oil Station itself, and I think that those aesthetic changes would be a benefit to the lot as well as to the community. So, I would be in favor of the approval for the red laser strip. But I think beyond that, that we would need some clarification from comments that were made earlier in testimony about the direction of lighting and the description of the shelving at the front of the store, if that's to remain or not. Because I think there was discussion about shading the lights so it wouldn't see them from the road, and that the front of the store between the two doors would be free of all merchandise to give it a cleaner-looking appearance to the public.
When were these... What discussions are you talking about now?
We had discussions in...
We? Zoning board?
No, with the proponents for the project itself.
Oh.
So, just to clarify those issues, if we could do that at the board, it would be part of the record for future use.
So, they've enhanced the front, and the lights will enhance it also.
I think they would, yes.
Okay.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
I've looked at lots of other stations and...
They look good.
They look better than what's there, for sure.
Yeah.
Gives it a softer aspect.
I think so.
Dana?
Yeah, is it my impression or have the lights under the canopy gotten brighter?
Well, I think the original presentation of the planning board was that there was a 450-watt bulb that they reduced to 250. But I'm not so sure that the planning board was made aware of the multiplier that was actually the internal mirrored surface of the recessed light itself, which I'm sure contributes to an increase in the lighting itself.
Oh, it's certainly is much, much brighter. Absolutely. I mean, I noticed that right away. I drove in there one night, and I'm like Taj Mahal.
Because all it is is mirrors. It's fasted in mirrors around the whole perimeter of the recess, which certainly exemplifies the lighting that's there now.
So, that's an issue with the planning board itself?
Well, it was discussed by myself on the planner, and there's no resolve to it at this time.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with us?
Right, basically, our request here is for a variances...
From 706B2.
706V2 with this... Now, basically, you mentioned neon. LED is not neon.
Well, in all of our conversations, we've always talked about it to be the same, so...
Well, it isn't, though.
Right, it is not.
It isn't, okay.
Like a strobe.
Because basically, no, it's not a strobe either. Light emitting diodes. Okay, I guess I want to make that clear because we do have something in our regulations of gosh, not neons, and this is not neon.
Correct.
So, I think we have to be careful on how we...
Identify the...
Identify it, right. I guess that's the question.
So, it's clear we're talking about a laser light source.
Yeah.
Or LED.
Yeah, LED, light emitting diodes.
Good.
I need to think about this. Aw, come on. Anybody copy the zoning regs?
For lighting?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
I got a drink again.
No, it's Rich.
Rich, what is it?
Thank you, Rich. You said...
See right off on this page, it's 706A... See, right off on this page, it's 706A,B,B. Some numbering problems here, Dan.
Well, that's why I went to give you this one.
Is that one different?
That one different, it's got ABB.
ABC. We're looking at, I'll let you have that one, AB2. Burn that book.
706B2, laser source light, the use of lasers, though. I'm lost.
Okay. Mister Chairman?
Do you have any electrical engineers around?
Yeah, well.
Can you differentiate the, for me, difference between a laser light source and an LED? Are they the same?
Well, the hard part is that laser light source is a definition that's in your zoning ordinance, so we're, we've kind of been struggling with exactly what your interpretation of a laser light source is. For us, an understanding of a laser light source is something that, um, directly emits like a, a laser pointer, for example, but actually has a solid beam, something that you'd expect to see. Whereas an LED is, is not something that's actually projecting light out, it's just, it's a visual, you could relate it to neon, except it's not a gas-filled tube, obviously, but it's, it's not a.
Neon is a gas driving through, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
But as far as what it would look like.
Does this have gas running through it?
No, these are actual LED tubes.
So they are not, right, okay, so they are.
So it doesn't have the same animal?
It, it's a low-intensity light. Whereas like the, the laser light source, and Dan, I don't know if this has come up where you've had to even define laser light source in the past or not, but, you know, the, our interpretation of something like that is it, it could be related to something, if you've ever seen the, uh, the lights that are used to attract.
Can you get up there, please, because the, I don't think the recording is picking up your explanation and.
Can you identify who he is?
Yeah, give your name and for the record, please.
Correct, my name is Robert Shuler with Cores States Engineering. And, a-again, for, you know, a difference between an LED and a laser light source, it, you know, we don't have a definition of what your, what your definition of a laser light source is, so all we can do is base it on other things that we've seen. And we would interpret that as being something that is a projecting type of light, something that's used to, like, for example, if you've ever seen the, the lights that are utilized.
Curises.
They're, they're on the ground, they actually project up, you can see them from miles and miles away, they, they're actually a tubular beam that you actually see projecting into the skyline.
Those planes they have are also lasers, aren't they?
That, that's another type.
When you have a presentation, you have a laser beam.
Right, I mean, it, it could be related if, and it, this might be a stretch, but if you've ever been to a laser light show, inside, you've got, they, they utilize a fog to actually enhance the image of that, but you're seeing a projected beam, and you're seeing that entire beam, you know, right across. You know, an LED, it's a fixed source, it's not, you know, it's not intended to move. It would be closer to a neon light in the way that it looks, but obviously, it's not a gas-filled tube. And with, without an actual definition as to what your zoning ordinance is interpreting a laser light source as, we, you know, all we can do is assume it's some kind, it's, it's a technical term. And I really can't give you a better definition than that.
Okay.
So it illuminates instead of a beam?
Correct.
Uh, it doesn't direct a light source, it, it's sort of like an incandescent filament or something, but instead of using incandescent, it has a.
Purely aesthetics.
Yes.
Now, I've seen the ones in Epping and whatever, and, oh, they don't project like a laser does, but.
Reflects.
Mister Chairman?
Yes?
My name's Paul Petropoly, I'm an attorney with, uh, working for Irving on this project. If I can approach, I'd pass out some photographs that show. These are night photographs of a similar site.
I've seen it one in Epping.
I think the top photograph is actually a Newmarket site, yes.
Thank you.
The bottom is a, is a canopy that would be similar to what's supposed to be proposed here, the same, the same LED light strip would be utilized in this canopy in Newmarket. With the absence of the peripheral lighting.
That's actually more powerful than this.
So the, the red, white, and blue is going to disappear?
Correct, and it would be replaced with, the, part of the reimaging would involve the alteration of the canopy to eliminate the red, white, and blue, uh, it's really, you know, the red, white, and blue stripes that you see on the top photograph, and in its place, there would be a blue, uh, what you see in the bottom photograph, obviously, it's at night, but it's a dark blue fascia panel that surrounds the canopy, and then inset into the, into that fascia panel into a groove is this red LED tube. And just to clarify, the, uh, I think the permits issued to date have allowed both the, through the planning board and through the building administrator, the replacement of the canopy, the question that is before us is really just lighting the LED strip, if that's accurate.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I guess the way our regulations go is the code enforcement officer has to make a determination as to whether what is proposed meets our regulations. If he feels that it does not meet our regulations, then, or if the applicant feels that the officer has improperly defined that, then the applicant has a, either appeals the administrative decision or come to us with a variance to allow what the zoning, uh, officer has agreed is not allowed by zoning. Now, I guess, at this point, Dan, we have to say, do you feel that this LED lighting is against 706B2, which is a laser source light? If, if you make that determination, then we have to go through all the steps for granting a variance if we want to allow this. If you make the determination based on the information that the LED is different than what is prohibited in the laser source light, we're gonna go home.
Mister Chairman, could I, could I add just two more things, uh, I think that are critical to that definition?
Yes.
One is, the first is that the letter, the original letter actually didn't characterize this lighting as laser source light, but rather, if you read that definition as, quote, "other high-intensity light for outdoor advertising or entertainment," I think that was what was in the original letter from the, from the building administrator. But, but in addition to that, a, a critical element of the definition of what's prohibited here is that it's prohibited if the light projects above the horizontal. And as you can see from the photograph that you have in front of you, we don't think that it does, and I also, if I could pass out for you the technical specifications on this lighting, you'll see the fascia panel that the LED light strip is sitting in, which really acts like a shield around the LED tube. And it's our position that even if it were laser source lighting or other high-intensity light, which we don't think it is, because the lumens are actually substantially less than the fluorescent lighting that's there now, but, but even if it were one of those things, it's not prohibited anyway in this case, because it's not being projected above the horizontal.
Because of the ceiling, okay.
Net dark blue canopy absorbs quite a bit of the light also. If that were white, it would be a lot different.
We're still back to the original whether the code enforcement officer is, still feels his determination is that this does not comply with our zoning regulations. And if he makes that determination, then we have to go through the variance, all the several criteria in the variance. If he feels that based on these new definitions or whatever, it does not, it is not prohibited by 706B2, then we don't have to go through the, all the conditions for a variance.
If I may read that again, please.
Thought you had that memorized.
I did when I was sitting down.
I'd shut right in. I know that. It's what's absorbing.
I have a question on projection. Basically, as all us crazy engineers do, is project how far, how do you measure the projection of a light source, su- but by a lumen count, or by how, how do you say a light projects above the horizon? How do you measure it?
Well. I'll defer to the engineer on that, I would think that, at a minimum, that there's some intent on behalf of the fixture to push the light above the horizontal plane. This is, right, I, I think that the LED tube really almost doesn't light anything, it doesn't, other than itself. It's not really projecting light, it's just illuminating the tube. But again, I, maybe I'll defer to the engineer.
I think the white engineer may disagree with you on that, but, uh, whatever.
It's kind of one of those things where it's visually, you just have to look at it and, and say, okay, if this were, if you looked at this and you said, okay, well, I can see this from a quarter mile away, as I'm, as I'm approaching it, yes, I can see the light, would that be projecting? Not necessarily. Projecting has to be something where the, the source, it, it, it's a single-point source that's actually forcing, uh, like Paul said, it's like actually forcing the light in, in an outward direction, and whether it would be above the horizontal or straight out, or even down at the surface. And the case with this light is that it's, there, there rarely is no measurable lumens emanating off of this light. It, it's.
No measurable lumens?
That, that's the hard part, because when you look at lumens, if, if you were to compare it to what's out there now, you've got a fluorescent fixture that has per foot, over 800 lumens per foot.
Right.
And then you take a light source that is not characterized by lumens per foot, but if you were to try and actually do a comparison of it, you would be down to as low as 100 in comparison to what, you know, the LED, or what the fluorescent tube would be per foot versus this LED. It, it, there's almost basically no measurable lumens from the light, because when it sits on the canopy, as you can see from the photo, you can't even, it doesn't even illuminate the fascia.
I know, I see that, it's, uh.
So it, it, it's kind of one of those things where if this were a projecting light, like a flashlight beam through fog, you know, you, you're actually seeing this beam projecting from that, that point source.
And that's how you measure your, your lumen intensity?
Correct. It, it's not casting, you know, a light, a, a measurable light level on the surface around it, below it, even, even behind it.
So it's not projecting, it's just illuminating.
Correct.
And the dark canopy is absorbing. If that was white, that would be a lot different.
If it were white, you would probably see a bit more of that canopy, you're right.
Well, and it'd be a lot more reflection.
Mister Chairman, I, I would, from reading, uh, seven, section 7.03B2, I would say that the proposed lighting is not what the ordinance is discussing in the laser light source.
Based on that, you would make the conclusion that this does not violate our zoning ordinance, and therefore, no variance is required?
I would say that it's not covered by our zoning ordinance, and therefore, I guess it's questionable whether or not it would be permitted or not, but I, I guess for the, I would say for the public welfare of the community, as well as for the aesthetics of the community, which the master plan, as well as the zoning ordinance speaks of in its language, that this would be permitted.
Would we be better off to go to, see this how, believe me, I don't want to delay this anymore than anybody else does, but are we better off, based on that comment, to seek legal?
No, I don't think so, he, he makes the determination.
You're just withdrawing.
He is the person who makes the determination to interpret the zoning regulations. And we either, if we get a question of whether he's interpreted correctly, then we make that determination, and that becomes a determination of the zoning ordinance, not his anymore. But if he makes the determination that it does not violate the zoning ordinance, that's the end of it. Unless someone else appeals that decision of his and comes to the board and appeals his decision, then we're back to appeal of administrative decision again, and whatever, so.
So basically, what we need now is a motion to.
Well, if he makes.
Don't even need a motion.
You don't, okay.
He's, he's the ruling guy.
Right, if he makes that determination.
He's been overruled before, so that's why I'm asking this question.
Yeah, yeah.
With these guys.
Yeah.
It's party of one, I agree with his interpretation.
The only, the only thing I would like to point out, though, is in this photograph, we can see a pole lamp, and we don't see a pole lamp.
Yes, I had that same question.
And, you know, lighting is so much of the aesthetic values of the community, that I don't think there's enough attention paid to it, and I think it's a good example, right in this picture, with the pole lights.
So is the pole light gone?
That's not Newmarket. I don't know.
That's a different site?
Yeah, well, no, the pole light's shown at the Newmarket site, but.
I sure would love to see that pole light gone.
The photograph, in the, on the, the bottom photograph is not Newmarket, so.
Oh, okay.
An absence of the pole light.
Right, because we haven't got that light in there.
I think we're still commenting to the pole light.
We, we can't.
No.
We can't answer questions that aren't asked. And we've got to, as a court of judicial board, answer questions that are asked, and we can't just say, oh, we'd like to see you do this, this, or this, we have to make a judicial decision on.
What's before us.
So if Dan makes that determin- determination that this does not violate 706B2 based on what is presented here, then a motion to go home is almost in order. After we approve the minutes.
Does that hurt your feelings?
It's not hurt my feelings.
Do you make that determination, Dan?
Yes, I do, sir.
All right, then.
And I agree.
I think the.
We certainly should not.
Motion should be made to what? What was the minute?
Certainly not set precedent for other applications before us.
Right.
Well, I think we're sort of making, well, no, we're not. It's, it's, you're gonna have to make the, in the future, you're gonna have to make your determinations, and the people who make are affected by it are gonna have to make their determination of whether you feel that go for variances. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
So when they're go- when is it going up? Can I ask that question?
You're over there now.
It's on site, waiting to go up.
Yeah, just turn the light on now?
But all that purple lighting will come down, it'll be, eight, like I said, 800 lumens per foot.
That's good, glad to hear that.
Okay.
Still gonna get clean fuel, right, not dirty fuel?
The other items on the agenda are.
Are you the owner?
There ain't no more.
Only the corporation.
That's it. It's over. All over, cut the snicker.
They have a good crew that works there.
Okay, the other, next item on business is approval of minutes of.
I think we didn't have anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got two meetings there, they're, they're discontinued meetings, but we have to approve the minutes.
You got any changes to be made?
I, I, I'm trying to find them first, and once I find them.
They're right here. They're right here.